Love soda. We do before noon?
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the November 21st, 2023 meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Indian River County, Florida. And we'll start off with a moment of silence for our first responders and members of the armed forces with an invocation given by our supervisor of election, the Honorable Leslie Swan. And then our pledge of allegiance will be then led by Commissioner Laura Moss. If everybody would please rise.
Dear Lord, your word says in Philippians 4:7, "Be anxious for nothing and in everything by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving. Let your requests be known to God, and the peace of God will surpass all understanding, will guard your hearts and minds through Christ Jesus." We gather today to serve our community, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. We pray for discernment to make sensible decisions and the courage to act upon them. May we use our resources wisely and well and represent all members of our community fairly so that we may make decisions that promote the common good. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and obstacles of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. We give thanks for our freedom we exercise and the many blessings of democracy we enjoy in these United States of America. We lift up all of our duly elected leaders and public servants and those in the military and law enforcement. Heal us from our differences and unite us, O Lord, with a common purpose, dedication, and commitment to achieve liberty and justice for all people and especially those who are most vulnerable in our midst. May we accomplish great things today. All this we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Please join me in being thankful for our great nation and pledging allegiance to it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to the next section is our yearly time to do our reorganization for our commission's will and directive. But first, before I turn the gavel over to somebody else, I'm going to indulge you for a minute to say thank you to everybody for this past year as being the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. So I'd like to say to my fellow commissioners that to each of you, it's been an honor for me to serve as your chairman this past year, to be out front managing the business and the meetings of this board and, you know, representing of all of us with a feel of great pride and respectfulness. It was great, but a unique year as we had to find and hire a new county administrator, Mr. Katanich. I think we made a great choice. And a new county attorney, but not really new, but he's been here longer than most of us.
Not recycled either.
But thank you, Mr. DeBrau. And then we, you know, we had to do things like try to figure out what Tallahassee's doing, sending down for us to do, and things of that nature. So, you know, we did some great things, too. We launched a new website, went virtual in the building department, made a commitment to our employees to, you know, better their wages, their insurance, and their benefits. And we opened a new health clinic to improve, you know, for our employees, their families, and retirees. You know, we've continued to commit to improve the lagoon and our beaches along with making changes to our zoning, our LDRs, and overall improving our customer service here at the county. And reinforcing the values on the importance of a strong public safety and health and keeping Indian River County special yet safe. We made sure that we continue our great relationships with the constitutional officers in helping them all to succeed and provide the services that they're responsible for. So my fellow commissioners, I thank you for your professionalism, your courtesy, and your advice, and also your patience, not always me hearing who made the motion or the second. But I had my vice chairman here that would poke me or Commissioner Laura that would say, you know, he said it. So I appreciate that that made us get through the meetings, but I'm not completely disabled yet, so. So, John, appreciate all your hard work. Bill, same, same with you. Commissioner Moss, thank you. Commissioner Laura, thank you. Commissioner Fleischer, always a pleasure. And our vice chairman, it's been an honor to serve with each and every one of you this year as your chairman, and much appreciated. Thank you. So with that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would like to congratulate you on a job very well done as chairman. It is a difficult position, and it airs you in a lot of different ways, but you've served very ably, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Now it's time to elect the chair and the vice chair. I will open the floor for nominations for chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
I nominate Susan Adams.
Second.
There's a nomination for Susan Adams and a second. Are there any more nominations? Seeing none, I close the floor for nominations. All those in favor of Susan Adams serving as chair of the Board of County Commissioners, please signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, five zero. Congratulations, Madam Chairman. I now open the floor for nominations for vice chair. Do I hear any nominations? There's a nomination by Commissioner Irman for Commissioner Fleischer. Are there, is there a second to that nomination?
A second.
There's a second. Are there further nominations for vice chair? Seeing none, I close the floor for nominations for vice chair. Let's proceed to vote on vice chair for Commissioner Fleischer. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Opposed.
Duly noted. Vote is four to one for Vice Chair Commissioner Fleischer. Congratulations, and I pass the gavel to Commissioner Chair Adams.
All right, thank you, guys. And we will, congratulations, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, and congratulations, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions?
Madam Chair, move approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer, and I will second that. All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. There is no proclamations or presentations, there is no minutes for approval. We'll move on to informational items. I would like to note that we do have a proclamation honoring Emory Bales II on his retirement from Indian River County Department of Utility Services with the Wastewater Collection Division. We'd like to wish him well in his retirement. And we also have a proclamation designating World Prematurity Day for the March of Dimes that they will collect after the meeting. And then with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Anybody from the public wishing to pull anything from consent?
Madam Chairman?
Seven.
Seven.
Oh, you guys are going to do a presentation?
Yes.
All right, we'll come back to that.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Of consent, thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will return back, I'm sorry, to the 2023 turtle nesting season updates.
Got some great news.
Yeah, I heard it was a good year.
Yes.
How many leatherbacks and greens and
Indeed.
loggerheads?
Morning, Commissioners. Quentin Bergman. Thank you. Coastal Resource Manager for our Natural Resources Department. This morning, I have a presentation for you all and our audience, recapping our 2023 nesting season. So here's a quick overview of what we're going to talk about today. This is really just an informational item for us and our residents highlighting the great success that Indian River County received this year from our beloved sea creatures. Just want to go over a quick background for everyone. Atlantic beaches are a vital nesting habitat for sea turtles. Sea turtles require sandy, warm beaches in order to reproduce. Without them, they would not be able to reproduce. Sea turtles are a long-lived marine species. They reach adulthood or maturity in between 20 to 30 years. They really are a long-lived species that require quite a lot in order to survive. In Indian River County, our nesting season begins March 1st and extends through October 31st. So we, right now, we're, as you can see, we're on the tail end finishing up nesting season. I wanted to touch upon some biological facts on sea turtles. These are a lot of the frequently asked questions I receive when interacting with the public. Sea turtles are a fascinating creature. They have a very unique life history as well as they require a long-distance migration. Sea turtles return to their home beach, meaning that any hatchlings that are hatched from the beach, once they reach adulthood, they will make their migration back to the same beach to reproduce. One adult female can deposit up to six nests in one nesting season, and they'll typically take one season off. So one nesting female will be kind of a every-other-year nester. In each of those nests, you can have up to 120 eggs, give or take. Of those eggs, 80 to 95% will actually hatch into hatchlings. And it's kind of the rule of thumb, we don't know for certain because the technology doesn't exist yet to track the baby turtles, but our best estimates is that one out of 1,000 hatchlings will reach adulthood, you know, back to that 20 to 30-year timeframe. And their biology is even more interesting because their sex or their gender is determined by temperature based when the egg is in incubation. So under the sand, that egg then will become a female or male depending on the temperature of the nest. So 84.2 degrees Fahrenheit is what the science has discovered as the tripping point. If you're a little warmer than that, it would produce a female. If it's a little cooler, it would produce a male. Very interesting. Here in Indian River County, we have a Habitat Conservation Plan, very unique. We're one of three counties in Florida that has this plan, and it's designed for each, just for our county. That was initiated in 2005, and one of the aspects that allows, affords the county is that every single nest and crawl laid with inside the county, all 22.4 miles of our sandy shoreline, is actually recorded. So we send out technicians and biologists every morning between March 1st and October 31st, and every track is GPSed, species is identified, and special notes are taken to see if that turtle had attempted to lay a nest or if it encountered any sort of structures like seawalls, crossovers, or beach furniture. All of that information is recorded. A really important note here is that not every single nest is marked in our county. There's far too many nests to mark them all. We only mark a sub-sample of nests, and that sub-sample is really to, not for protection because that nest will be just fine incubating on the beach, but we actually mark that so we can track that nest throughout its incubation period, and we're going to collect the reproductive data, how many eggs hatched and how many eggs didn't hatch. That's what we're really after. However, in our high-traffic areas, that's where we're going to see nests protected. So there's additional nests marked outside of our highly-used areas, think beach parks and accesses. So moving into our results, I, you'll see on your screen here a graph that depicts the nesting season. On the left axis, you have number of nests recorded, and on the bottom axis, you have the years of the season. So this is nest counts per season, and it's really important that we look at the entire span of data. As you can see, that it changes back and forth quite a lot, up and down. So looking at this type of data one year at a time, it doesn't really tell you much. It's much more important to look at the entire span of data. So we started collecting this data in 2005, and here you can see that it, for leatherbacks at least, the numbers are low, and that is normal. So we're not seeing any drastic changes with our leatherbacks. Leatherbacks nest more south of here, so we are really on their northern range of their nesting habitat. Places like Martin County, Broward County receive a lot more nests, but you go even further south into St. Croix, St. Thomas, the Virgin Islands, Caribbean, even Barbados, they receive numerous more leatherback nests. So, and the dotted line on this graph is our trend line, and having a steady trend line is a-okay. There's nothing, no red flags about this data at all. Moving towards our loggerhead sea turtle, we can see quite a bit of different data. We have much higher numbers. This is because we are in the heat, the hotspot of loggerhead nesting areas. So counties to the north of us, Broward County, sorry, Brevard County, and St. Lucie County receive a lot more loggerhead nests. Our first nest was received on April 16th, which is about normal what we'd see, but you can see that this year was a record year, which is great news, something to celebrate. Again, looking at the entire span of the data, we have lots of up-and-down numbers, but when we look at an overall trend, we can see that the numbers are trending upward, which is exactly what we'd like to see. Lastly, green sea turtles. And that is not a joke, that is the data. We actually received 4,105 green turtle nests this season, which is well, well above the previous record from 2017. And again, just to highlight the important fact that we look at the entire dataset rather than one year at a time. Between 2013 and 2019, we saw a very cyclical pattern. One year was very high, the next year was very low. This kind of goes back to the fact that sea turtles typically nest every other year, and that's exactly what we're seeing there. However, that doesn't always hold true. Environmental things, unlike engineering or chemistry, the environment and biology, it's very fluid, it's very dynamic. So that's why we use words like typical and normally and usually, because the animals, they're ultimately the ones deciding, and there's so many factors coming in on that that it influences. So we saw that the cyclical pattern ended, and now we're moving into something different, which just holds hope for the future as what is next to reveal itself and really understand more. In conclusion, talking with colleagues, talking with our regulatory agency, Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, we're seeing statewide records for loggerheads and greens everywhere around the state, which is great news. And one of the biggest questions is, why? Why now? Why are we seeing this? Explain this. And the short answer is, we don't have a great explanation right now, but we do have some clues that we can point to that probably point out the correct answer. One of that is that we've had 50 years of the Endangered Species Act that has afforded these turtles protection for, since the 70s. 50 years, and going back to what we know about sea turtle biology, we're estimating that one or two generations of sea turtles have actually been protected on our beaches, went out, did their life history path, and then came back to reproduce here. Other great benefits that we have seen is coastline development regulations. Obviously, people want to live on the coast, it's Vero Beach after all. We have a lot of people who want to live close to the water. So those regulations have really helped since the 70s, as well as we have, just to highlight, our own sea turtle protection ordinance locally. Moving forward, though, continued effort is needed. This is not a done, we're done, job well done. Sea turtles are still very vulnerable. For instance, this was the warmest summer on record. When we go talk about their sea turtle biology again, that nest, that sex determination based on temperature, that's really going to play an important role about how this population is moving forward. Outreach efforts for the county have been ongoing, we've been making some improvements. We've produced some stickers and window clings to give out to coastal residents or any resident that is interested in having them. This is an example of our sticker that gives a quick little information about our sea turtle lighting ordinance and how artificial lights are detrimental to sea turtles. We've produced new brochures, we're producing new digital graphics, and I continue to give presentations to the public. I have to include this slide in almost all of my presentations. A lot of people ask me, what can I do as an individual to help sea turtles? What is it that, you know, I can't make a decision on the coast or anything like that? So individual choices really do matter. This is just some of the threats that sea turtles face every day, and these are some of the things that, as individuals, we can have some sort of impact on. So either if you're a Florida resident or you live in the Midwest or Northeast, these personal choices that you make can really add up for our marine creatures. And I do have to acknowledge that this is a group effort. I am not the only person out there protecting our sea turtles. 22.4 miles is a lot of beach to cover, and with having over 12,000 nests this year, there's no way I could do it all. So I coordinate with a lot of organizations you see here on the screen to, and make sure that all of our turtles are protected here in the county. And with that, I'd love to answer any questions.
Guys have any questions?
Madam Chairman? I got to see this presentation yesterday by Quentin at the Beach and Shore Meeting, and it was as good yesterday as it was good today, so great job on it. It's a lot of good information, and it's just wonderful to see that happen. And I will attribute some of that to our efforts in beach renourishment over the years that were constantly, you know, when we need to, having to redo some of the beaches and stuff like that. So, you know, some people may disagree with the money that it costs, but again, it's what we do, and it's helped the turtles out tremendously, and it's been a great job, and what a successful year, and it's just a fascinating thing. And the public loves turtles, who doesn't?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
That's great news, good to hear. All right, with that, we will move on to constitutional officers. Our first up is our Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller with the 2022-2023 Financial Statements. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the invitation this morning. We're pleased to announce that this morning we were able to return to the Board $283,162.45. It's always a great day when we can return money to the county for the benefit of the taxpayers, and this really represents about 20%, refund of the board's budget funding the Comptroller's office. We're very happy to be able to do that today. It wouldn't be possible, of course, without our staff. From the Comptroller's Division, we have Rayanne Cohn, who's here, she's our Assistant Chief Deputy Comptroller. Alyssa Nagy is our Chief Deputy Comptroller, she was unable to be here today. But of course, they're responsible for making that financial statement that we included in the report to the board, which gives you the additions and subtractions that we take care of throughout the year. And also, the amount of the refund, just so the board knows, and I think you probably have heard this before, this is from excess revenue in the official recording division at the courthouse. Every time someone records a deed or a mortgage or a will at the courthouse in the official records, there's a fee for that. And we try to project every year how much revenue we're going to receive. Our projections this year actually exceeded what we thought, and so that's why this refund is possible. And today I brought with me Brandon Young, who is our supervisor in the recording division. It's his department that really made the bulk of this refund possible, so I'm going to give him the honor of presenting the check to you. Brandon, if you could. His department last fiscal year processed 64,604 recorded documents, and those are the fees that represent this ability to give you the refund. So kudos to his staff and the rest of the staff at the courthouse and the Comptroller's office, and that's why we're able to give you this check. All right, and thank you for the opportunity.
Madam Chairman, Ryan, I just want to recognize Brandon. He is invaluable to our office. There is not a week that goes by where he doesn't call us or we don't call him on a recording issue. Kudos, Brandon, good job.
Thank you, Mr. DeBrau, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. You guys have any questions? Comments?
Thank you, Ryan.
Awesome, I have a motion to accept from Commissioner Fleischer and
Second.
a second from Commissioner Irman. All right, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
What are you, are you going to take that big check and deposit it? Or? You need a bigger deposit slip.
Give it to John, we'll need it.
Give it to John.
Never get it in the drop.
Oh. Might be dicey, thank goodness the sheriff's back there. Don't arrest me when you see me trying to shove that in there. All right, the next one up is a property appraiser with a 2022-2023 annual report. Welcome, Wesley. You got a big check, too. Your check isn't as big.
I know, I know.
That might actually fit in.
But it's the number of decimal points in it. Commissioners, first of all, as we close out the year, I'm proud to say that, again, the Property Appraiser's Office was able to put forth a tax rule that was accurate, on time, and under budget. And of course, as was mentioned earlier, you can't do that without a great team, have a tremendous staff over there, and in fact, without their help in doing this, this is not a one-man operation by any stretch of the imagination. And nor am I able to give back to the taxpayers of Indian River County $535,547, which is a record for the office. And a lot of that came not from not being able to run a budget, because we don't get very much revenue coming in from the other side, and ours is in fact taxpayer-funded on the other, unlike the clerk's office. But what's happened over there is I have lost about 120 years of institutional knowledge in three employees. And so, of course, that is significant. It's a lot to swallow and to move forward, but it really also creates opportunities for those dedicated public servants in the office to move into those leadership positions. And so that's where we are with it, and of course, we're able to do that at a lower salary to begin with. And so we've taken advantage of that, we've embraced technology, not afraid to try technology even if it fails. Some of the technology we're using right now is making it so that we can process the property record cards on our website faster once the deed gets recorded. When I first became property appraiser, it could take up to 45 days for the property record card on my website to update and reflect the information that was recorded on a deed at the clerk's office. I'm proud to say we're getting closer to a seven-day period on that right now, and my goal is to get there in 72 hours and have that reflected and updated, but not just that is that my goal, it's also a commitment to do that without adding personnel and staff. So we're, I'm very proud of the team we've got over there, couldn't have done this without them, and would like to present this check to the taxpayers of Indian River County.
Fantastic, thank you so much, Wesley. Kudos.
You don't come?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Laura?
Motion to accept.
All right. All right, I have a motion, a second. Commissioner Fleischer, did you have a comment?
Apparently, it was significant on the other end of the size.
Made up for it with dollars versus
He saved a few dollars on the size of the check to give more back to the taxpayer. Thank you.
We'll take that. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Laura and a second by Commissioner Fleischer to accept the annual report from the property appraiser. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. With that, we'll move on to the Sheriff's Office 2022-2023 Annual Report. Welcome.
Do you have a big check?
No, no big check. I learned my lesson a couple of years ago about that. I don't bring a big check down to you guys. So thank you guys for having us today. And obviously, thanking staff. Amy Cooper is in the back. She does a fantastic job. I know she works with your office and certainly keeps us surprised of our finances. And so I'm here today to return three different pools of money from our general fund. We are returning 1.2 million. Our law enforcement trust fund, $115,000 and change. And our offender fees, just over $3,400. Having said that, I'm also going to ask you for some of that money back. When I do our budget every year, I try and come as close to possible as having an even budget and actually being correct with it and not padding that. I always want the amount to be correct. In this particular year, some of the money that we're asking back is items that we had already ordered that have not come in yet. That's been a delay problem that we've had for several years due to COVID. Some of the items, some of the money that we're asking back for is to cover projected expenses with our partners at Treasure Coast Community Health. Approximately $750,000 of the ask is an estimate from Treasure Coast Community Health on rising healthcare costs inside the jail. And I know that we just opened up the Employee Health Center. We know that the cost of healthcare is one of those things that we're trying to manage. And so obviously, I'm going to keep an eye on that and monitor where we're at with TCH. But at this point, that's been the ask. So starting with the easy stuff, the offender fees, $3,410.68. We're asking for that to be returned to the agency to cover outstanding items that were approved by the Board on August 15th. For the law enforcement trust fund, we're returning 115,000. We're asking for $24,900 back to place into our fund to cover ordered outstanding items that were approved by the Board on August 15th. The remaining $90,000 may go back into the 112 fund for you guys. Of the general fund, of the 1.2 million, just over 1.2 million, we're requesting just over a million returned to the agency as a budget amendment to cover outstanding purchase orders. And again, those projected costs increase from TCH.
Will you repeat all those numbers again?
Do you need them? It's on the memo, but I'd be happy to. Sure. So we're returning $1,211,627.79 to the general fund. We're returning $115,009.68 to the law enforcement trust fund. That's 160. We're returning $3,410.68 to the 165 fund, which is the offender fees fund. Of the offender fees, we're asking for all $3,410.68 to be returned to us. On the law enforcement trust fund, we are requesting $24,900 of the $115,009.68 to be returned to us. In the general fund, we're returning $1,211,627.79. We're asking that $1,1,627 be returned to our agency. Did you get all those numbers?
Yes, thank you. Sorry. I haven't had all my coffee yet this morning.
No worries.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ehrman, second by Commissioner Moss. Any questions? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Next up is our tax collector with the 2022-2023 financial statements. Her check's always the biggest. Just saying.
Because we work the hardest to get it back.
Next year, she's going to have to have three people carry it in.
Well, I wanted our directors to come up because they do so much of the work and they don't always get the credit. So Jordan Abbey, who's in the middle of the tax season, is extremely busy. You all know Brad Newton and how he keeps all of it straight. I'll never know, but he does an amazing job as our Director of Finance. And of course, Adria Esbeck is my right hand, and I so appreciate everything that she does. And because he's who he is, Dan Baker's not here today. We're expanding the West Office. Again, the county's growing tremendously. And Dan had to be out there today, and he just completely blew me off and didn't show up. But that's fine. I want him to be where he needs to be because they're doing some serious electrical work protection on the systems, which goes to my good morning, Commissioners, and congratulations, Madam Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman. Congratulations. Thank you all, first off, for the expanding the lobby at the main office. I can tell you, and they will tell you, we have just been swamped with business from St. Lucie County. You know, their system is still down with the exception of one office. So we've had about 30 days of a lot of St. Lucie County residents coming to Indian River County. We've had title, we have dealers that are now doing, want to do all their work here. So we're going to be as gracious as we can, but we can only handle so much. We've actually had people switch from, it's a system they have to go through like an MOU. And they've switched from St. Lucie County doing business to Indian River, the dealer, automo dealer work. So we just got a new RV one yesterday. So, but I thank you because we could not have handled it without all those extra cubbies to put people in. And I will have to thank Chris Clark, the tax collector in St. Lucie County. He has sent us some of his employees to help, and they've been a big help. They love being in Indian River County. So again, thank you for that. And first off, I have to tell you what Jordan's up to in the tax roll department, which I think is most important to all of us, how our collection's going. To date, we have, in real estate, we have 31,409 accounts paid. That's 33%. In tangibles, we have 556 paid. That's 32%. Doesn't sound like a lot, but right now we've taken in $125 million of your $423 million tax roll, or of Wesley's tax roll, I should say. That's 30% collected. And that's not including the mortgage companies, the escrow accounts. So we expect another 30% to come in. They have to pay before the end of the month. And so they always wait. Can't imagine why, but they wait. And so we'll be able to add to that shortly. I know you all are aware, but some of our taxpayers may not be. So for the general public, I'd like to say that both the property appraiser and the tax collector's office are fee-based. So to explain what we do, we're not required to return excess funds to the county. And I can tell you, there's many counties in the state of Florida that don't. But again, that's why I have our folks up here, because we're fiscal conservatives and they work under Brad's supervision because, boy, he has a big no button. They really work hard to make sure the budget is as close as it can be and that anything that we do is certainly an improvement to the office, but keeping the finances in mind first. We completed 542,398 transactions in 2223 budget year. Some of the changes that we made that I think were improvements both financially and to keep people out of the office, I don't say that in an ugly way. I just say, you know, our offices, your offices are just so big and they only can handle so many people. So of course, the main office renovation, which included an extra station and a drive-through, improvements to the drive-through, which I think has been tremendous. It works so much better. We, when I came here, we did not have a full-time drive-through personnel. We just used a cubby and they would work back and forth. So now we have one or two people there full-time. And y'all made that happen, so thank you. We added additional dealer lockers. If you've noticed, those there in the, out in the hallway. And it's a tremendous way of keeping people out of the office. Not only that, your automobile dealers, your used car dealers are able, much like your big box stores, you can, they'll order something, they'll come in, they'll put their paperwork in the locker. They sign in, sends out some message that it's there. When we complete their work, which we have to do for everyone, we complete their work. We send them a message, it's available. Maybe their check amount's wrong or something needs to be done, needs to be changed. Sends them a message. They come pick it up. And it keeps them out of the office. It makes them, and you have a little longer hours that the lobby's open. And thank you, sir. We'll be doing the same thing at the Sebastian office. We're adding lockers there where we have room. But they're going to make a little construction change for us so we can put it in the place that's most convenient and out of the way of the public because that one will have to be in our lobby, not outside. Additionally, we've added five new positions with the budget amendment and bringing the employee count to 73 full-time and two part-time, which is, when I came here, we were in our 40s. So it's an amazing increase in employees, and we need every single one of them. I think right now we need, Brad, don't we need five more? If that's the right number. We, it's amazing. We added text messaging appointments to our queuing system, which is a huge advantage. And then we're adding online title applications, which again, keeps people out of the office. Again, that's 542,398,000 transactions, hundreds of thousands of transactions. And we're returning to the county, which is the bottom line. And while we're here today, $2,554,442.81.
All right, Carol Jean, well, you win the size physically and dollar-wise. So past the crown stays with you.
Thank you. Ryan made it a little larger this year. And just so you know, since 2008, since I took office, we've returned just under $41 million back to the county. And we're proud of that. And my staff should be proud of that because they're the ones that did it. They're the ones that make it possible. And while I believe maintaining really great customer service. Again, it's all thanks to your all's help because, as I've told you several times, a lot of counties don't get along. And we do. We all work together, and I appreciate that so much.
Thank you, Carol Jean. I would agree. It's nice to be able to work with them.
Can we do a picture with our big check?
Of course. Yes. Commissioner Fleischer.
Motion to accept and approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Moss. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we will take a picture. Thank you. See, this is aspirations for next year. The bigger the check, the more you get.
2.5, you get a video.
Thank you, guys. That's really appreciated. Sure, sure.
Oh, okay. Absolutely.
Come on, Wesley.
We're going to do checks or just people?
Yeah, well, all will be out there, high behind the checks.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Take a check next year? There's no sunshine between you guys. You guys can talk about it.
Yeah. All right. Next up, we have our lovely Supervisor of Elections with her 2022-2023 annual report. Welcome. Always a pleasure to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and congratulations. And good morning, Commissioners. I first like to take a moment to congratulate Commissioner Ehrman. He did a phenomenal job on Saturday night at Dancing with Vero Stars. That's a lot of work.
If he stayed till the end of the meeting, he's going to do...
He's going to do an encore.
A performance. It's an encore. Yeah.
He doesn't know that yet, but...
We're all really proud of you. You did a very good job. So I'd like to begin by thanking all of you for your unwavering support during the past fiscal year as elections continue to be front and center stage. This budget year, we were blessed by Senate Bill 7050, and I say that with tongue-in-cheek. This massive 96-page election bill was signed into law on May 24th, which was a couple of weeks after I submitted my budget for the 2023-24 year. Fortunately, we had the funds to cover some of these unfunded mandates, such as we had to update all of our voter cards, new vote-by-mail outer envelopes, had to have new verbiage on them, new language on our address confirmation cards. All of this costs a lot of money to have these things reprinted. And it had to go into effect by July 1st. And I want to express my sincere appreciation to the Board for your generously allocating the funds to enable the Supervisor of Elections office to conduct successful elections. I also want to thank my staff. They are amazing. And right now, we have 10 full-time and one part-time. And when I think back to when I first started at the Elections Office in 2004, we had 13 full-time employees and 35,000 less registered voters. So pleased to say we're returning $12,693.01.
Awesome. Any questions? All right.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ehrman with a second by Commissioner Moss. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And Wesley, you're up again on municipal election revenues.
Yes, thank you. We recently conducted the municipal elections for the City of Sebastian and the City of Vero Beach. And the cost for conducting the City of Sebastian's election was $58,710. The cost for conducting the City of Vero Beach's election was $32,673. So I'm requesting to have the revenue received from conducting these elections, which totals $91,383, rolled back to our 2023-2024 budget because we don't allocate for those funds when we submit our budget.
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving to you all.
You too. Thank you. All right, with that, we will move on to public hearings. The first item is 10A1 Enterprise Leasing Company of Florida LLC's request for abandonment of a 30-foot-wide platted right-of-way. And I'm going to assume that planning is on their way now. That's probably them coming in the back door. Yep. Perfect. Welcome, gentlemen.
Hi. I am. Lay it on us.
All right, for the record, Brandon Christopher Cragan, Chief of Current Development. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Before you today is the Enterprise Right-of-Way abandonment. Property is located north of 8th Street, west of US Highway 1, and east of the FEC Railroad. It's approximately 30 feet in width as well. All reviewing departments have reviewed and recommended the abandonment. It's not needed for county roadway or access to any surrounding properties. No easements are required, either county or private. And the applicant has coordinated with the FEC Railroad, who also has no objection to this abandonment. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners abandon its right to the subject portion of the subject right-of-way. I'm available for any questions you may have.
I have a question. It looks like the right-of-way goes across two properties. Are we abandoning it across both properties?
Yes, this is all going to be one single property for the new enterprise expansion.
Fantastic. You guys have any questions, comments, concerns at this point? All right. If not, then we will... I got to open the public hearing first. But I appreciate the enthusiasm. Hold that real quick. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Hello. It's on.
Thank you. Commissioners, Peter Waldman, on behalf of Enterprise, I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for the applicant? Nope. All right. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Seeing none. With that, we will close the public hearing.
So I'm requesting to have the revenue received from conducting these elections, which totals $91,383, rolled back to our 2023-2024 budget, because we don't allocate for those funds when we submit our budget.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleischer with a second by Commissioner Ehrman. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will take a picture.
If the other two million, they would get the picture.
Thank you. See, this is aspirations for next year. The bigger the check, the more you get.
Yeah. Picture. 2.5, you get a video.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Come on.
Oh, okay. Absolutely.
Come on, Wesley.
Sure.
We're going to do checks or just people? Yeah, well, all will be out there, hide behind your checks. You're going to do it.
Listen, y'all make it fast, chill down. This is... It is a team act. We all hear well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have one check.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Make a check next year.
If we do the rice on...
These guys will get it.
It's very nice.
It's easy. There's no sunshine between you guys. You guys can talk about it.
Yeah. All right. Next up, we have our lovely supervisor of elections with her 2022-2023 annual report. Welcome. Always a pleasure to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and congratulations.